For those who are wanting childcare, please meet at this store here on my left. And the kids' activities, same location, Adam? Okay, so all kids, both childcare and kids, please go out the door to my left. Okay, good evening, everyone. My name is Tom Sextrow, and I'm going to call this meeting to order. Welcome to our 74th Town Meeting, Evendale, Ohio. If you notice, there's no stage this year, and there'll be no lengthy presentations from council on the departments.[126.56][126.56](APPLAUSE). If you look at the placemats in front of you, one side will list the agenda for this evening. Also, it lists the employees' service here at Evendale, and also the volunteers across the departments. The other side lists this year's highlights for each of the departments, so feel free to take that home with you. We hope you find this format to be more enjoyable. We wanted to make it more up-close and personal, and for us, council and the mayor, to feel more connected to you, the residents. So with that, please rise for the presentation of the flag. ...of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands: one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you. With that, we'd like to have a universal blessing, and it'll be given by Francis Wagner, a resident of Evendale.
You can sit if you're comfortable. I won't talk that long. Good and gracious Yahweh God, we come to you from diverse religious denominations and traditions, yet collectively, we praise and thank you as the source of all that we have and all that we are. Humbly, we ask your blessing on our village of Evendale, on the employees who protect and serve us daily. May your infinite wisdom grace the deliberations of our elected officials. We seek your blessing on all gathered here this evening in fellowship. We are grateful for the food we have eaten and for those who prepared it. We seek your care, especially for the many unknown souls outside the village realm who lack adequate nourishment and sustenance, and may God bless all.
Thank you, Francis. Thank you. And with that, to make this meeting official, we need to appoint some officials. So I'm going to make a motion to appoint Hugh McKinnon as the moderator for this year's town meeting. Hugh, please stand.[359.56][359.56](APPLAUSE). The next official, I'd like to make a motion to appoint ICRC as secretary for this year's town meeting. Thank you. And Beth? Thank you. Okay, thank you. That was easy. Okay. Next, or the introductions to start the meeting. The first is Mayor Dick Finan. Please, when I call your name, please stand and remain standing. Our mayor, Dick Finan. Next is Steve Burke. Steve? Steve is running for council this year. It'll be the start of his second term. Congratulations, Steve. Next is Bill Putoff. Bill Putoff will not be running for council this year. He is at term limits. Next is Carolyn Smiley Robinson. Carolyn? Carol will also not be running this year because of term limits. We'll miss both of you. Next is Beth McDaniel. Chris Patterson. Tom Sextrow. And this is a good reminder to vote on November 4th. We also have two residents that are running for council for the first time, and the first is Wanda Walker Smith. Wanda, please stand. And Michael Stroh. Where is Michael? Thank you. With that, you can all be seated. Next is greetings and comments, so the mayor would like to now speak on the future of Evendale. Mayor?
Thank you, Tom. Tom was instrumental in putting this little event together tonight, and I think he should get a round of applause. Very nice. Very nice. This is the 74th Annual Town Meeting. It's mandated by the village charter that we have this town meeting each and every year, and we have always done that. We have not been able to have food for some years when we had a shortage of funds, but we've been able to do this pretty much every year. I'd like to also, again, recognize Bill Putoff and Carolyn Smiley Robertson. They have served admirably. I think Bill Putoff has been on council 24 years. Am I correct? 24 years? And council has been the head of our police and fire committee for quite a number of years, and she is very much going to be missed as far as council is concerned. Stand up, and let's give him another round of applause for him. Good service to this community. It's them, and the rest of council, and the members of the administration, and the fire department, the police department, the service department, that make it such a great place to live. Great place to live. Since our last town meeting, the village has accomplished quite a bit, and a small list of those things are on the other side of your placemat. We encourage you to take it home with you. There are some valuable numbers on it as well, but it gives you just a glimpse of all that has gone on within the village. But I'd like to tell you, just to take a few minutes about where we're trying to go in 2026. To begin with, the Community Investment Corporation is studying the potential disadvantages of expanding our community reinvestment areas in the village. These would enable houses to get a tax reduction if they make improvements on their house. Don't have to do it, but if you feel so inclined, it would give you a tax break. There's been two CRA districts in Evendale already, but both are basically commercial developments, and these would be strictly in the residential area. The city of Blue Ash has had these since 2014, and the result is $95 million of development, residential development, within the city of Blue Ash. Quite remarkable. And Evendale will continue to study this service. The village fire department has ordered a new engine, and they anticipate receiving that no later than first quarter of 2027. We are also studying the building or renovation options for another, a new fire department. Part of the existing building dates back to 1950, and they are really not functional any longer. The new service department building, you have seen that rise up. It's in a new location, and we're looking to repurpose the existing old service building in 2026. You're welcome to visit the new service building on November 14th, from 12 to 3 o'clock. Open house, everybody is invited. We'll have some favors for the people that come. We anticipate completion of the elevator in the cultural arts building by early 2026, if not sooner. Our problem has been water. We had ran into an underground spring, which has caused us all kinds of problems, and you can't put an elevator in a wet place. The traffic control system in the village of Evendale is going to be upgraded, replacing outdated hardware and software. No additional signals will be added, and none will be removed, and therefore, existing traffic patterns will not be altered. Other items under consideration by the council are replacement of vehicles for the police department, computer upgrades for all offices, and potential to guard against cyber security intrusions. They have become a major problem for communities around our area. And we have a replacement of some dump trucks as far as the service department. Also, in 2026, we are going to be celebrating 75 years of Evendale being in existence. To commemorate this, we are installing a decorative water fountain on the premises between the recreation department and the fire department. Additional celebratory events will be announced as they are finalized. These are just a few of the things that are going to be gone in 2026. On behalf of all of the members of council and the administration, we thank you for all of your support. Thank you.
I want you to stay up here for a minute. Okay? Stand right here. So I'm going to go off script for a minute here. I think this is okay. I'm going to tell you, you know, we're trying to get more up-close and personal, so I'm going to tell you two short stories about this man, Richard Finan. So several, a number of years ago, he was the president of the Ohio Senate, and some things were said about him. Surprising, but they were said, they said that he was stingy. You know how stingy he was? They were saying he was so stingy that if he was at the Last Supper, he would ask for separate checks. That's this young man. Have you, right? Am I right?
I'm with you.
Okay. And one other thing, so a couple months ago, I'm speaking with Dick in his office and this and that, he goes, "Do you know that when I asked for Joan's hand in marriage the first time, she said no?" Is that right, Joan? Did you say no to Dick when he asked you to marry him? She had a good excuse. She wanted to finish college. Good for you, Joan. So how many years of marriage?
Will be 70 years this summer.
Yes, 70 years. Was it worth the wait?
Heck yeah!
Okay. Hey, with that, it's time for the question-and-answer period. Does anybody have any questions? I guess not.
I guess you weren't expecting me to be your first question? Well, it's not really my question, but I wanted to make sure that I gave whoever an opportunity to answer a question that someone actually asked me, because I'm sure that other people have the same question. And it is about what is happening with Duke Energy and the gas line going up Glendale-Milford and the traffic jams and all that mess, so I'll let somebody who knows more about it, James, I will let him answer. Now I'm going to run.
Yeah. Thank you. For those who don't remember, I'm James Jeffers. I'm the village engineer and also the service director. So back when Duke Energy proposed the pipeline that went down Glendale-Milford Road and built the substation that was on the former Bob Griffin property, they always went to supplement Line A. Line A is the regional feed that runs from essentially Lebanon through Park Hills, past the mayor's house, down Cooper Road, but it basically is the feeder for all the residents and businesses in this area. And so the purpose of that, what they're doing is, the building that's on Griffin reduces the pressure from the main down to where it can be serviceable, and now they're making that tie-in to Line A, and then basically, it's a redundant system. Most of our natural gas prior to that pipeline going in comes from the south. Comes through one station in Foster's, which is out east. If that goes down, it would have cut off about 40% of the supply for this area. So what Duke is trying to do is basically supplement that. One of the units that they had expected was delayed, but, and I know our fire department was a little bit concerned of the way that they were approaching some of the construction, so what you're seeing, the metal sheets there are what they call piling. It's basically a protective measure for the workers that are working in the trench. At this point, they expect to be done shortly before Thanksgiving, and it seems like they're on target to do that, so.
Hey, James, while you're up there, could you just give an update with, I mean, the question that came up last year was the speeders on Cooper Road and...
Correct. So we have looked into a couple different measures. I know earlier, late last week, we installed the, signaled our digital speed limit signs, basically to try and get people more recognition. We did the tattoos or the street pavements. So it is something we are continuing to analyze, and what is the traffic volumes and speeds. We're hoping this will have some effect on that. We did some preliminary speed studies earlier this year, and as this goes on, we will continue to do this and see if we can come up with some other solutions.
Thank you, James.
Good evening. I'm Lily Shockley. I live on Britton Trail. I'm about a 30-year resident of Evendale. My question, along with traffic patterns, is, I live on Britton Trail. What could be done about, I know we don't have sidewalks, and I typically walk my dog early in the morning and evening. What can we do about people who routinely park on the street, particularly on Kingsport? A number of cars routinely are parked there, and I notice we have delivery people, Amazon drivers, who are looking at their phones, and I'm really concerned about the safety, particularly if it's near a crest of a hill. People are coming one way or the other. You have to get out of the way, and if you have a dog, or you're walking, basically, you have to get in the grass. So what can we do about people who prolong parking on the streets?
You know, that's a really good question, because, you know, when you look at Kingsport, the frontage of the yards aren't very deep.
Correct.
So to put, you know, I understand the concern with the cars on the side, and there are quite a few parked there throughout the day.
Right.
But to put sidewalks there...
Oh, the question is not necessarily sidewalks, but what to do pertaining... The question is, yeah. Is there any type of code or reinforcement for people who, you know, I understand temporary parking, you have company and whatnot, but there are people who routinely always park on the streets. On Kingsport and also on Britton Trail, both are crest areas, and if you're trying to pass, so maybe is there a code or, you know, conversations with the residents that we can get those cars not to be parked there continually, day after day?
Yeah. Boy, I can't, is there anyone here that could answer that question better than me?
I can address to a certain point. All the parking that happens on Kingsport is legal, the way the code's currently written, and I do understand Ms. Shockley's frustration. Back before I was an empty nester, at one point in time, we had four kids, all driving their cars, living at our house between 16 and 21, and out front of our house in my neighborhood up in Liberty Township at the time, it looked like a used car lot. And you'll see that a lot along Kingsport. You know, it's a little bit more on the narrow side, but parking is permitted on both sides, and you tend to get a few houses, and they change over time as, you know, different people live there, kids are different ages. But ASING's saying right now, there's nothing we could do from an enforcement standpoint with that, so.
Well, perhaps, I understand enforcement, maybe looking at it from a safety perspective, particularly for, you know, when I walk with kids, they're going to the bus stop down Britton Trail, I think that maybe there's something that we can look at from a safety perspective for pedestrians and even just people who are not familiar with the area. If you are coming up, even if you're coming up Britton Trail, that crest, there's so many parked there, and the sun's hitting you the right way, I see, I talk to neighbors that, you know, they could easily not see someone walking or run into a car that they don't see because of the sunlight at first times of the day. So maybe it's to approach a conversation around the safety.
Yeah, we can always look at that. I'll get with James, the village engineer, we'll get with the council members, and we'll look at it and see if there's something we can do to at least minimize some of the issues with it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I just wanted to say something.
We are...
Sorry.
Just a second. Go ahead.
We are going to prohibit parking on both sides of the street from now on for 4th of July and other events that go on in the village. But as the chief said, it's very difficult to prohibit parking entirely.
What I said is not, not ruining, but that, parking there routinely, you know, for your heart to, you know, for days at a time, you know, and just for the safety perspective for everyone.
I know.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm sorry. My name is Tasha Gibson. I live across the street from the neighbor who has several cars parked on Kingsport. It's a total of 13 cars between their driveway and the street. We have contacted the police department in the past, and there was a limit to how long a car could stay there and not move. They even marked the tires. I think it was at that point, three days. I also was an emergency room nurse who was on call for heart transplants, and I went to this resident and asked him to please not park and block the end of our driveway, because our driveway is like a hill. I told him I will slide into you on bad weather, even though we are diligent about cleaning the ice off of our driveway. Several times I've come close, he blocks the end of our driveway. I've spoken to him multiple times. He refuses to do anything about it. The cars do not leave the spot. I know there's talk that maybe he is using that position to sell, leaving his cars there and is selling the cars, but something needs to be done. It is dangerous, because I can't even check my mail. We can't have any visitors at our house to park on the street, because he literally one day had five cars parked in front of his house. So we can't even have company or a party. Something needs to be done. I've seen parents walking their, people walking their dogs, children in strollers, children on their bikes and their scooters. It's a blind spot coming around the corner and up the hill.
So you're saying there's 13 cars parked?
Between their driveway, their house, and parked along the street. We have calculated 13 cars at one time, and that's not a one-time thing. This is a daily occurrence. And I have talked to him, and I literally have almost plowed into him getting his mail because he has so many cars. Something needs to be done. It's a safety issue. I'm a nurse. I do everything possible, but it's dangerous for our residents. And I know there's speeding at times. I know there's new drivers that are, but this is not a person who has young children. This is a couple with grown children that don't live there and has multiple cars. Something needs to be done, because there have been close calls, not only with delivery trucks, but residents walking.
Chief, are you familiar with this? You are, you are, yeah, okay.
No, I'm not familiar with this house in particular, but Ms. Gibson, if you want, I'll give you a business card, email me, and we'll see what we can work on together on this.
Thanks, chief. Thank you. Oh, that's crazy.
It's a used car lot.
It's a used car lot, so we'll definitely look into that. Thanks for bringing that up. Are there any further questions? Okay, with that, this concludes the meeting for this evening. Thank you all for coming. This is a record. I think we're going to do it in less than an hour and a half, where it's usually two and a half hours. Do you love this format, or what? And feel free to take those placemats, they'll make nice conversation pieces at home.